We are missing Karim and Rob. So in the interest of time, we can start and then if they join the meeting, they'll participate at that time. Okay? Well, thank you for your interest in joining C E C twenty five. We received your application. My name is Wayne Yu. Also, as you see on my screen, you can also call me Wendy. Currently, I am the president of the council. I have a daughter at P S one oh seven. She's in fourth grade. I'm a returning member from last term. And we're very excited to have have a new member to join us. So can you introduce yourself? Give us your background, your school affiliation?
Absolutely. Well, my name is Darlene Malave, as you see on my screen. I live in Corona, Queens. I've been living here since for about seven years roughly. I am originally born in the Bronx, raised in Long Island, so I have some city school experience as well as suburban school experience in my own personal academic preparation. I went to medical school in the Dominican Republic and I came here and now I am finishing a master's in speech-language pathology. When it comes to my my two sons, I have I have had them first going to school very briefly in daycare centers in the, I'm sorry, early learning centers in the Bronx. And then in the private school here and eventually in P S twenty eight, which is a couple of blocks away from where I live. Then COVID hit and now I have my child in P S four ninety nine, the Queens College School for Math Science Technology. He is just starting fifth grade. And then I have a little one in the New York Mosaic Pre-K New York Call of Science, right in front of the New York Hall of Science in Flushing Meadow Park. I've been very, very happy with that school. And I guess my mother was a teacher for twenty-five years and she's retired now. So I've always been involved in knowing, you know, certain details of administration and whatnot and how things kind of go in schools. And being also a, you know, a graduate student clinician, interested in working in in schools in the future, I do have an interest and I have, my older son is also special needs. He has ADHD and he receives I C T and, you know, gets special education at schools. So that also something that is interests me. It's a passion for me to advocate for parents and also, I guess, be some sort of a mediator, if you will. Those are things that interest me. Anything else you'd like to?
Thank you. Thank you for your introduction. I think we have some parents on the council with children that need I C T, I E P help also. And you'll get to meet them. Actually, in fact, our next week meeting on Wednesday, October fourth, we will be giving a special needs education presentation. So hopefully you'll be able to join us. Okay, at this time, let me see if anyone else. Okay, Esther came on. Oh, Rob came on. Okay. So are we just missing Karim then? Okay, so at this time, we're gonna start with our questions.
Hi, I'm here. Thanks, sorry.
Hi, Esther.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here.
Okay, thank you for joining us.
Good evening.
Hello, hello.
Okay, so my first question is, as a C E C twenty-five member, we represent the parents and the families of District twenty-five. We, the council, meet in person once a month. Our monthly general meeting where the public is present is held at the district office. And then after the general meeting, we have a business meeting among the members only. We have presentations on issues that affect our district. We make recommendations and resolutions. We occasionally have special meeting like the one we're having right now. We make school visits and occasionally we attend school and community events. Now, knowing we, I know this is a volunteer position and our time with our families, with our work, it's, you know, very precious. But, you know, we do expect members to commit some time every month to the council. So knowing that, you know, there's these meetings and occasional events, are there anything that you think may prohibit you from attending or committing to to the council?
To me personally, right? Absolutely. Well, I will be honest. I do have some commitments on a weekly basis. The only days that I really have available are Fridays, every Friday. So I have four Fridays a month, depending on the month, right? That I have available. Those days I pick up my kids from school and those days, you know, I have pretty much the afternoons free because I have one other day during the week to catch up with my graduate assignments and my classes and all of those other days are pretty much full with responsibilities. But Fridays I have and if if that, if this requires more time than afternoon, Friday afternoons, then then I would be, you know, honest enough to step down and give the position, of course, hand it over to someone that has more availability. Yeah.
Our monthly meeting is the first Wednesday of every month. In the evening, it starts at seven o'clock at the district office. Would that be a little, would you be able to make the in-person meeting, you think?
I do have classes Wednesday evenings from six to eight forty. So that is, sorry, excuse me, I have a motion detecting light. I, every Wednesday up until the middle of December, I'm going to have classes and they, unless there's an emergency, I do it virtual. But no, I don't. In all honesty, you know, now that you're mentioning that, I didn't know. I would not know. I wouldn't be able to make those in-person meetings at the moment. My participation in class has a value and I'm giving. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Eden, Eden Rubenstein?
Sorry, I was trying to get to the unmute button. Hi, Darlene. My name's Eden Rubenstein. I'm returning member as well to the council. The first vice president this year. My question for you was, what research have you done to prepare yourself for this position should you be chosen to join us?
I guess since I became a resident here in Queens of District twenty-four and I was always very interested in where I would put my son, I've done a lot of, I feel I've done research on how satisfied parents are with the schools in this district. And I've done research on sites.
Are Ellie any spelling Darlene?
Shirley, you need to mute.
Sorry about that. I'm sorry.
It's okay. So yeah, that's that's the research I've done. I pretty much looked up most of all the schools that I can say in the public, in the public school district. Because in the moment of me placing my own son, that, you know, wasn't, I wasn't satisfied with the schools around where I lived. So I did extensive research on parent satisfaction, security, you know, teacher certification, how many qualified teachers were there in, you know, any given school. So gifted and talented programs, all of those things, that was my research, pretty much. That's why I was interested pretty much in in knowing more about schools, about being a part of them, seeing how I can, I guess, contribute to the experience that I have talking with people on the scene in the school administration. My husband was the president of the P T A for P S twenty-eight. And that was something that was a great experience because I was part of that and I got to speak a lot with the, you know, members and faculty of administration. So it just, I saw a value in the fact that I was bilingual and the fact that I can advocate for many parents. That's that's basically the research that I've done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi Darlene, I'm sorry about before I was asking my husband, like D A R L Y N is Darlene, right? I just didn't want to miss, I don't, I don't want to make any mistake calling your name. I'm sorry about that before. So my name is Song. You could call me Shirley. I'm the second vice president of the Education Council. So my question is, in your opinion, what are the top issues about, roughly about three, that New York City schools are facing currently?
Well, one issue I feel would be the the issue of being prepared, security-wise, there's always a lot of, I feel that what I've heard current parents very concerned with is the security, especially in after-school programs. There's always an issue of availability of staff and after-school is so important for our parents to be able to make their schedules as well as be committed to getting their school, you know, getting their children to school on time and pick them up on time. So I guess the security measures I I see from my experience, what I know, that would be one topic of concern. Another I would say would be the literature that is being available, being made available in the libraries of our schools. That was something that I'm personally passionate about and I do understand that there are, maybe there's a lot of things that are changing in terms of that. But from what I know in my experience involving, being involved with the P T A with P S four ninety-nine and talking with the administrators, there's also a concern there of as type of censorship of what should be on the bookshelves of the of the libraries in our children's schools and what should be accessible and, you know, what is age appropriate. Those, I think that is a concern throughout New York City schools. And the third, I would definitely say hands down would be appropriate additional supports. So, you know, I C T services, services, the evaluations. It's no secret, you know, it's been, there's a shortage, a definite lack of efficiency with the city's availability to evaluate children that need services, you know, speech-language pathology, O T, P T, all those things that that a lot of children's I E Ps are out of compliance and I think that is a broad issue throughout New York City schools. That would be the three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chow? Do you have a question?
I'm sorry it's taking so long. I'm trying to unmute. Old people act slowly, like sick people. Good evening, darling. Thank you for your interest in joining, joining the C E C twenty-five. My name is Joseph Chow. I'm a retired assistant principal of mathematics from Francis Lewis High School. So my question has to do with, I think I know the answer already, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. What are your opinions on the gifted and talented test screen programs in middle school and high school? And the specialized high school admissions test? Thank you.
You're welcome. I do think personally that there should be some sort of a process. I'm not so sure, in all honesty, that the like, there are, there is research that testing and, you know, this is a big issue, right? All the way up in Albany as to whether a test measures exactly everything a student has to offer. In my opinion, I do think that the process that is in place, a process needs to be in place in order to screen children and see who belongs and who is, you know, apt to to be in a gifted and talented program. There's many applicants and there's few that enter because there's, I mean, this is a huge, an enormous district. I do think that process needs to be in place, but I would definitely say that just as our society changes and people change, administrations change in the district, I do think that it is necessary to revise those procedures, those those testing processes for, I wouldn't say each borough, but I would say that it shouldn't be one standard for everyone. There should be things to be taken, you know, into consideration like socioeconomic status and things of that nature and and so forth because well, the truth is, I think that it's it's different and those things should be taken into matter and adjusted so that we can appropriately screen and really give a widespread opportunity to all those that do qualify for a gifted and talented program. I hope I answered your question. I know that was perhaps vague. I I agree with the process. I just think that revision is needed. That's.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Rob. Bob, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Hi, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, hi, I apologize for joining late. So Darlene, I apologize for that. So thank you again for, as the others have expressed, thank you for expressing your interest. It is a volunteer job, so to have anyone that's willing to give of their time on a volunteer basis for for the greater good of the children, that's that's awesome. So so thank you for that. And I'm gonna just play a little bit of catch-up because I missed your introduction. I heard you said you're bilingual. What what languages do you speak?
I am fluent in Spanish. I read and write. I understand it. I, yeah.
Okay, great. So Spanish and then presumably English. Great, thank you. And then you mentioned your child is in in P S four ninety-nine?
Correct.
And 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 again, I apologize. Where, I probably should know this, but where is four ninety-nine?
That is right on the campus of Queens College. It's located right on the on the same campus.
This Queens College. Okay, fine. So like, I guess Townsend Harris is also on.
Right across, yeah.
Okay, all right. I know where that is. Gotcha. Okay, so I have perspective. Thank you. So my question is, as you've already identified, that you have limited time, as frankly, all of us have limited time and I was late and I apologize for that. Again, in an expression of limited, limited amounts of time. If there was one thing that you would change, that you would make your mission or you'd want to impact in the system? Is I think there's lots of things that, you know, the system could be improved. But I know we can't all get them all done. But if you were going to devote your effort to something, what would be your passion, your mission that that you would want to leave as your hallmark of how you left the system better than when you found it?
That's a very good question. There's so many things that I'm passionate about and I guess I would tackle one that I feel could could be solved. There are many things that I think that would be more than a challenge. So many things would have to change for us to be in agreement on major issues like the ones I'm thinking of. But if I could pick one, I would say the the need to have better evaluation services for the children that are in need for the tier-one, tier-two, tier-threes, that that screening for for children all throughout, I believe there needs to be more availability of professionals that are that work under the Department of Education, I'm sorry, excuse me, the Department of Education to be available to keep the I E Ps of the children of New York City in public schools, right, and in compliance and have that availability there. It's, I believe that there's more than more than enough resources to allocate to to do that. So I feel being, you know, a future speech-language pathologist, that I'm very likely going to be part of the system. I feel that that would be something that I would be most passionate and dedicating my time to.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Darlene. I appreciate that. Thank you for your input.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, for your question. Let me see. I don't think Karim is on, so we are going to move on to Alvin.
Hi Darlene, I'm Alvin Hung and I'm a newly elected C E C parent member of District twenty-five. Welcome to tonight's meeting. And my question to you is, before Shirley was mentioning about like the three things that you feel needs to be stressed for our community. My question is, what strategies would you use in order to be successful in implementing or stressing those needs that you would use? Maybe talking to the parents of District twenty-five or even to to our meetings. What strategies?
That's a good question. And thank you so much for the warm welcome. I do think that making parents aware in district meetings, bringing these issues to the forefront with parents that are there in the moment interested, but also widening this awareness. I guess blast emails, you know, I, at least being, being a student myself, I see how wide communications, you know, just are administrated, you know, rapidly. And to make sure that students get awareness, right, and oh, of these events or whatnot. I feel we can do the same thing with the parents of our students. And, you know, make them aware of the services and the needs and the issues that they'd like to become aware of. We can do polls. You know, there are, I feel that we can use these, the social media, we can use what we already have in order to bring up this heightened awareness of the things that we'd like to bring, these issues. That would be one one strategy. So blast emails, doing these district meetings. I do think that because of availability and time, people find it, you know, very, very limited availability. Maybe people would like to get more involved and they just don't have the time. But quick polls and email blasts, I think that most, you know, I think people can contribute, at least with offering their opinion and what they'd like, what would they, what, excuse me, what would they like to see change? And I think that that's valuable. There is value in knowing what our parents are interested in and what are what are the needs of the community. That would be one strategy. Was there, do I have to give you two or three more or a few more, maybe?
That's fine. But like I said, one of the our position as volunteer parent members of C E C is to hopefully engage with all the students and all the parents of all the schools in the district, not just one. So this question is kind of broad, like how you elected, try to to communicate with the parents.
I guess that would definitely be something, I mean, if it would be district-wide, right? All these schools and all these districts, I believe the district meetings are a good place to bring, you know, PowerPoints, to bring speak about it, actually say something about it and do the verbal communication and invite parents, you know, be approachable, be someone that people can feel comfortable that they can come to. And, you know, availability, email me anytime, you know, so, you know, five days a week or something or seven days a week, you know, to allow people to be able to to trust and confide maybe the things that they'd like to talk about, me to, I would like for this to be come up, you know, to talked about at the meeting. Allow people to to share their insight. I think, I guess the district meetings would be a good time and place to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and last but not least, Frank? Frank, please unmute yourself. Can you speak in? You're somewhat unclear. Yes, it's very low. Yes. Yeah, please. What's your question?
No, I mean, I don't have any question.
Okay. All right. Okay, so Frank doesn't have any question. Darling, is there anything, anything else that you want to add? Or let us, tell us about yourself that you think would be, you want us to know when we make our decision? Anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, you've been answering these questions very well, by the way.
Oh, I've been trying. I wasn't, I wasn't exactly super duper prepared. I was just want to be open, honest and and transparent, you know, I'm not going to. Having been part of other P T As, I know the value and what we contribute as parents to our children's schools to be something, part of something bigger, I believe is a big responsibility. And I just want to be transparent that I am working on something and I, that I am a mom, that I that I work on weekends, you know, that's my situation. But I do feel that something I can contribute and and that's my availability. I hope it is, if it is a deal breaker, then I hope that at at some other, you know, time, you know, when I have a, you know, a different availability, I can be a part of it. But that I have an interest, that I have a passion, that I am already someone that's going to be involved in schools, particularly in New York City, which is planned, you know, where I plan to stay. It's just something that I think that would be an asset to know about, to be, to bring perhaps things that I hear, that I know, that I see in my own profession and personally to share with and hopefully that can contribute to to helping other students, other families and our, make make the system better.
Yeah, I can see the passion. Thank, thank you for being honest and being transparent. I, we appreciate that. And, you know, you know, we hope that even if you're unable to, you know, join as a member, you can participate and come to our meetings.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think at this time, I don't think there's any other questions from the members. We thank you again for your interest and your time. Carly will reach out to you. And the the board member will will discuss in the business meeting about whether to welcome you as a new member. So thank you. We'll reach out to you soon.
Thank you very much, darling. Thank you.
It was a pleasure to meet all of you. Thank you for being so warm and welcome. Bye, Shirley.
Thank you, Darlene.
Bye bye.
Okay, so we have the, uh, the, the other members here. Okay, um.
So didn't Carly say that we should stop the recording, um?
Yeah, give me one second.
And.
We have some numbers.
On this issue? Oh. Okay, welcome back. Uh, as I was saying, we will leave the vote, the, uh, the voting, uh, for next Wednesday at the general meeting.
I'll send Alvin a message in our group thing that I have.
Um, yeah, I have typed it right now.
Oh, you got it, Rob?
Yep.
Awesome.
Okay.
Alright, thank you everyone for coming on tonight. And I hopefully will see you all next week, please let Carly know, um, ahead of time. Whether you'll be present or, uh, won't be able to make it. Um, I, I will be in person.
So will I.
Okay.
I'll be in person as well.
Okay.
Do we know of anyone that's not able to make it next week or?
Just pulling up the calendar, I expect to be there, just give me a second to pull up the calendar.
And please look at your emails for the school visits, I can come.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's on the. Yep, yeah, no, I, I'll be there in person.
Okay, great, so. Alright, alright, thank you, have a good evening, everybody.
Alright, thank you.